In the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present tonight with the exception of Councilman Ted Fairbanks. There's a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted in the meeting room on the west wall and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on September 6, 2016 as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of Treasurers' report of claims. E1, approval of Main Street Beatrice claim in the amount of $1,268.46. E2, approval of balance of Treasurers' report of claims in the amount of $424,654.24. Item F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $64,084.77. Item G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. Item H, Resolution Number 5959, appointing Brandy Coffin to the City of Beatrice Library Board. And Item I, Resolution Number 5960, granting permission to Julie Fisher, doing business as Julie's Hot Dogs, to sell goods on city property. Are there any items anybody wants removed from the council agenda?
E1.
Cur. E1. All right.
I will abstain from E1.
And Rick will abstain from E1. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the consent agenda be accepted, approved, or ratified as presented, except Item E1.
Second.
And moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda with the exception of E1 be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0.
Mayor, I move that Item E1, the approval of Main Street Beatrice claim in the amount of $1,268.46, be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Cur, approval of the Main Street claim in the amount of $1,268.46. Discussion.
I just pulled this off. What's this for?
I'm looking to see.
It's not in the packet.
Yeah, it is.
I think it is.
It's multiple.
Beatrice Plus.
Yeah.
518 for wayfinding signs.
What page are you on there?
That'd be the first page of the claims report under administration. 5470. Main Street Beatrice, public funding for wayfinding signage.
And then there's another one. There's, on the first page of your claims, the wayward signage, and then...
Butch, page 11.
Yeah, they're both here.
And also... Page 11.
Is also 750 for Beatrice Plus for the wayfinding.
Yeah.
So for the signs altogether.
For the signs, yes. One would've come out of the funding policy, one would've come out of Beatrice Plus.
Okay.
Any other questions? Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. We have no public hearings tonight or bids. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 5961, establishing various rates.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5961 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that Resolution Number 5961 be passed and adopted. Mr. Templemeier.
This is our annual resolution that we do regarding fees that are required, that we establish. The only fees that we have changed in this year's fee resolution are the fees that are on page 19. They'll have to do with the ambulance service, the 1, 2, and 4, so BLS non-emergency, BLS emergency, and ALS 1 emergency. We increased the dollar amount on those three costs. All the rest of the cost in the fee resolution remain the same previously. And those fees were increased as we looked at what other communities were doing, what Medicare was reimbursing, what insurance companies were reimbursing, and adjusted ours accordingly.
Comments? Anyone from the public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 5961 has been passed and adopted. Next item is Resolution Number 5962, entering into an interlocal cooperation act agreement extension letter between the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, and the County of Gage County, Nebraska, for the purpose of providing ambulance service in Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5962 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that Resolution Number 5962 be passed and adopted. Mr. Templemeier.
We have an agreement with Gage County where we provide medical EMS services to portions of Gage County. In return, they pay us some money. It's essentially the same agreement we've had for at least the last year, if not the last couple of years, so we recommend approval of this agreement. Dollar amount's the same, terms the same, everything else is the same.
Right.
At what point do we increase the dollar amount since we're paying our employees more vehicles cost?
That would be something that'd be in long-term negotiations with the county. One thing you have to keep in mind is we have a number of contracts with the county, and so we probably just need to sit down and review all of them at once and see in totality our revenue should be.
This is a one-year agreement?
One-year agreement.
Okay, so we can maybe revisit it again next year?
If you're ever here, we always raise the employees' wages and vehicle costs, but...
Very true.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Anybody from the public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution 5962 has been passed and adopted. Next item is Resolution 5963, designating the speed limit for all traffic traveling north or south on part of North 33rd Street between Lincoln Street and Court Street and US Highway 136.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5963 be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Cur, that Resolution Number 5963 be passed and adopted. Who's going to take this?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
Pursuant to the annexations that we undertook a number of years ago now, maybe, we incorporated areas that included Lincoln Street out to BSDC and also North 33rd Street, east of the property, that the school district's looking at putting an elementary school there by the cemetery. We were noticing, as the traffic committee just reviewed a number of items, that the proper posting wasn't posted on these streets, and when we annex streets, we have to put in our own resolution for traffic speeds. And so it was recommended pursuant to the traffic committee to designate both of these areas as 35 mile-per-hour zones, and then we'll go out and have the street department sign them accordingly.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know that they're even posted.
I don't think there's a speed limit sign, is there?
There are no signs out there right now. That's why I brought it to them.
Technically, because it is in the city limits, you could say they're 25, because the rule is if they're unposted, the default is 25. But we'll go out there and get that corrected after approval.
Any other comments regarding the speed limit? Anybody from the public? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 5963 has been approved. Next item is Resolution Number 5964, designating the speed limit for all traffic traveling east or west on part of Scott Street between Sumner Street and Reed Street, US Highway 136.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5964 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution Number 5964 be passed and adopted.
Slightly different situation. Obviously, this area of Scott Street has been within the city for an extensive period of time, but pursuant to our review of the actual signage that's on the roadway out there, it wasn't making any sense to us. We had areas that just weren't covered by a sign. For instance, if you came off Sherman Street or the highway, and you may not have the proper signage for you, to kind of designate in an area where we know the speed limit does dip down and come back up to the school area. And so pursuant to that, the traffic committee recognizing that, we went back, tried to find resolutions which actually designated those areas. We were unable to find the specific designations on any of these streets, and so we've recommended, pursuant to traffic committee review, the speed limits you find here. So from Highway 136, Reed Street going east to Sherman, it'll be a 35 mile-per-hour zone. From Sherman Street to Cedar Street there next to the school, it'll be a 25 mile-per-hour zone. And then from Cedar Street back to Sumner Street, it will increase to 35 miles per hour. I believe that is incorrect on your Exhibit A. So the resolution is correct, though, that that'll be a 35 mile-per-hour zone. So we'll change the exhibit... Note the change to Exhibit A.
What's the distance in between that speed limit change?
Um...
Occurs at the intersection.
Yeah, it will occur right at the intersection.
But signage, obviously, the next sign will be just past the intersection, so if you turn onto Scott Street off of Cedar, you'll have an opportunity to see either sign and...
Okay. Phil?
Why wouldn't we just make it all 25 all the way out to Highway 136, being right by the fairgrounds? You have that egg business right there, you have the other business across the street. If they're turning in and out, it might, it's a very narrow street. I think it'd be almost recommended to go just 25 all the way out to 136, and there would be no confusion on it that way either.
Well, Chief Lang, come up, kind of discuss how we designate these and come up with the speed limits.
Majority, it was pretty darn rough, too.
Yeah, it's rough. I didn't see the traffic engineer out there, so, you know.
Bruce Lang, chief, please. Actually, 25's a relatively restrictive speed limit, and so you want to reserve that for residential areas and more congested areas. The fairgrounds there, although there's quite a bit of stuff there, except for the county fair, it's really not a highly traveled street. It's certainly engineered for 35. Then, in addition to that, although that road is rough, but it's smooth now, and gets occasionally rough again, you know, it's still, it's an open area, and 35 would be, I mean, make more sense for that. 25 by the school, for sure, because of the school kids.
Sure.
Plus the fact that street carries a lot of traffic from the college, that's a bypass from going down 136.
And if you ran, if we ran the speed trailer there and logged speeds, you know, your average speed, because it's so lightly traveled in those areas, is probably going to be closer to that 35, and certainly haven't had any accident data that would tell us otherwise.
Do you think, though, if you go from 35 to 25 and around, people are going to adjust that, so go and hit 35 and just stay there till the end?
No, I think actually 25, and if anything, I can't recall if that's got school, school zone signs on it, but certainly we could add that to the speed limit signs for the 25. And that's usually, we have really pretty good compliance with that around school zones with reduced speeds, so, you know, I think, I think people would adjust. I mean, there's always going to be speeders, that's what we make a living, but, you know...
Okay, any other questions to the chief? Anyone from the public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 5964 has been passed and adopted. Next item is Ordinance Number 16-040, approving the plat of Brewers Creek Second Subdivision for Gary and Karen Higgins. Mr. Catlin?
Did I read that correctly?
Yeah.
Mayor, I move to remove Ordinance Number 16-040 from the table for further discussion.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cur, that we remove Ordinance Number 16-040 from further discussion.
What happened last time was when this item came up, there was a motion to table it, rather than postpone it. Under rubber's rules, if you make a motion to table something, you have to make a motion to take it off the table, which is why you have to take a motion to take it off the table, so then we can come back and discuss it. Whereas if we just postponed it, we wouldn't have to do this. Lesson learned.
All right, comments? Any other discussion? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved, that is approved 7-0 to take it off the table. Next item is an ordinance amending the zoning map for the City of Beatrice, Nebraska.
Nope, now we gotta go back and actually pass the ordinance.
Lesson learned.
That's right.
Mayor.
Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that Ordinance Number 16-040 be passed and approved.
Second.
Then moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Ordinance Number 16-040 be passed and approved. Any further discussion?
I'll just note in regards to this, we did receive the amended changes that we needed for the plat, that included the pipeline easements and everything. Chris Witelski and Ken Morgan were able to work that out, so they got that on there to James Burrow's approval, so he was happy with that. We did let the property owners know. Ultimately, also, just as a reminder, we did agree before we tabled this item to suspend the rules and hear this one time tonight, so just point of order.
Any other comments? Questions? Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-040 has been approved. Next item is an ordinance amending the zoning map for the City of Beatrice, Nebraska by changing the zoning of Lot 1 Brewers Creek Second Subdivision, Gage County, Nebraska, from AG Agriculture to RR Rural Residential.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given Number 16-041. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that ordinance, the ordinance be given Number Title approved, rules suspended, ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please.
That is approved 7-0.
Negative in zoning. That was for the plat.
Ordinance Number 16-041 by number only the first time. Ordinance Number 16-041 by number the second time. And Ordinance Number 16-041 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that Ordinance Number 16-041 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that Ordinance Number 16-041 be passed and approved. Discussion.
Just note that when this Brewers Creek Second Subdivision, the single lot that it's representing was carved out, it was designated to be rural residential, it's under 10 acres, and so to conform with the zoning ordinance and to set it to the request of the owners, the Higgins, they requested it be rezoned to rural residential. So that's what we're doing.
Comments? Questions? Public? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-041 has been approved. Next item is an ordinance to revise the water rate charges for water purchased from the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given Number 16-045. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance be given 16-045. Rules suspended, the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-045 by number only the first time. Ordinance Number 16-045 by number the second time. And Ordinance Number 16-045 the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be Number 16-045 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that ordinance Number 16-045 be passed and approved. Tobias?
As we discussed last year, and again here about the last week or so, as we put together the budgets, we're proposing the same rate increase that we talked about during the budget time. That is an 80 cent per month increase for the average residential customer and a $2.34 per month increase for the average commercial customer.
Comments? From the public? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-045 has been approved. Next item is Item D, ordinance to regulate the fees and charges for the use of the wastewater treatment system of the City of Beatrice as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given Number 16-046. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that ordinance be given Number 16-046. Title approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-46 by number the first time. Ordinance 16-046 by number the second time. And ordinance Number 16-046 the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that Ordinance Number 16-046 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance Number 16-046 be passed and approved. Tobias?
Again, during the budget time, we talked about this rate increase. It's proposed that this, for the average residential customer, would see an increase of $2.42 per month. The average commercial customer would see an increase of $15.55 per month. One thing to keep in mind is, if you recall, the WPC plant has upgrades that are needed to the tune of about $10 million. With these rate increases, we believe that we'll build a cash flow, a large portion of that to probably 2020, 2021, at which point we'll have to issue bonds for the last portion of it. But it should delay that needing to borrow money and allow us to have the funds available to make those bond payments at that time.
Questions?
What you projected, how much money do you think we're going to collect that we won't have to bond?
We should, of that $10 million, we should be able to collect $4 million of it, and that's paying for various things. This next year, you have a half million dollar improvement at the facility. We're going to pay for that out of cash, so we don't have to borrow money for those types of improvements as we go. It's kind of the plan that we have set up.
Okay. It's good planning. Any questions? Comments from the public? All right, your vote, please. That's approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-046 has been approved. Next item is Item E, ordinance establishing various salaries of city employees.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given Number 16-047. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that ordinance Number 16-047 be read by title only three times tonight. Rules suspended. Ordinance to, or the motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-047 by number the first time. Ordinance 16-047 by number the second time. And ordinance Number 16-047 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance Number 16-047 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance Number 16-047 be passed and approved. Mr. Templemeier?
This salary ordinance calls for a 2.5% increase pursuant to the union contract that was agreed to last year.
Comments from anybody? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-047 has been approved. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to name a portion of a bike trail located along the former Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way, within or owned by the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, from the westernmost line of Section 3 Township 3 North, Range 6 East of the Sixth Principal Meridian, to the southernmost line of Section 1 Township 3 North, Range 6 East of the Sixth Principal Meridian. All-to-be-named Chief Standing Bear Trail.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given Number 16-048. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance be given Number 16-048. The title approved and the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-048, the first times, ordinance Number 16-048 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 16-048 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance Number 16-048 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that ordinance Number 16-048 be passed and approved. Tobias?
This is an ordinance to name our portion of the trail, starting at Dempsters on the east side of the highway and extending on out through town, through the, by the recycling center, and then on out of town for approximately the two miles that we own outside of the city limits. We are looking to rename that portion as Standing Bear Trail. Once the next portion is complete from Dempsters back up to Trailhead Park, we'll look to rename that one, but we didn't want to name a trail that was currently non-existent, and so we'll look to name this. As it continues on out of town, the rest of it's already named Standing Bear Trail by the Trails Foundation.
Questions? Comments?
Maybe just a slip-up. You said Standing Bear Trail the rest of the way down, also chief with it, so they're staying with the...
Yes, Chief Standing Bear Trail, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't...
Same name, yes.
Adding something to it.
We did not devote him or anything like that.
Jim?
Good question, though, Dwight.
Anybody from the public? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-048 has been passed and approved. Next item on the agenda, Item G, ordinance to name all portions of US Highway 136 located south of the intersection of Scott Street and Reed Street, US Highway 136, to the south Beatrice city limit as Reed Street.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given Number 16-049. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Motion by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the ordinance be given Number 16-049. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-049 by number the first time. Ordinance Number 16-049 by number the second time. And ordinance Number 16-049 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance Number 16-049 be passed and approved.
Second.
Motion by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that ordinance Number 16-049 be passed and approved. Discussion.
When it came to the construction of the new Humane Society, we had to look to find a way to address them. As we started to do that, we realized that addresses along this stretch of road were inconsistent, to say the least. Some of them were addressed off of Reed Street, others were addressed off of Highway 136. Generally, the north of the street and the west side of the street are the even numbers. However, as it turned, some of those numbers got turned around, and so we felt it was best that anything inside a city limit should have a city address, so it shouldn't be off of Reed Street. We just had never extended Reed Street south of Scott Street. And so what we'll do is we'll go back out, we'll address the Humane Society, their new building is Reed Street. The veterinary clinic has to get readdressed as Reed Street, but those are the only two changes that'll be made. And then moving forward, as the city continues to extend to the south in that location, everything will come in as a Reed Street address.
Any questions? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-049 has been approved. Next item is Item H, ordinance to vacate a portion of the alley, Block 21, Brumsbach, second addition to the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given Number 16-050. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the ordinance be given Number 16-050. Title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and that's approved 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-050 by number only the first time. Ordinance Number 16-050 by number the second time. And ordinance Number 16-050 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance Number 16- Mayor, I move that ordinance number sixteen dash zero five zero be passed and approved.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance number sixteen dash zero five zero be passed and approved. Discussion.
As we previously discussed, this is part of the vacation that Chris Wiltolski has requested. It's a part of a alleyway. He's asked that we vacate a portion of it, so the first ordinance you have is a vacation, the second ordinance is approving the conveyance, and then there'll be a resolution selling it to him. So all three of those are what you see coming up before you.
Still enough room to get our trucks and stuff back there, partner?
Yep.
Questions from the public? And your vote please. That's approved seven zero. Ordinance number sixteen dash zero five zero has been approved. Next item, item I, an ordinance to convey the vacated north half of the alley adjacent to lots four and five, except the east ten feet adjacent to lot five, block twenty-one, Brum Bock's second addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, owned by the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, to Christopher C. Wiltolski and Kimberly A. Wiltolski.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number sixteen dash zero five one. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the ordinance be given number sixteen dash zero five one, the title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number sixteen dash zero five one by number the first time, ordinance number sixteen dash zero five one by number the second time, and ordinance number sixteen dash zero five one by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number sixteen dash zero five one be passed and approved.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance number sixteen dash zero five one be passed and approved. Any further discussion on this? It's just related to what we originally talked about. Anyone? Anyone from the public? And your vote please. And that is approved seven zero. Ordinance number sixteen dash zero five one has been approved. Next item, and the final item on this subject, resolution number fifty-nine sixty-five, executing the contract for sale of real estate to Christopher C. Wiltolski and Kimberly A. Wiltolski.
Mayor, I move that resolution number fifty-nine sixty-five be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that resolution number fifty-nine sixty-five be passed and adopted. Any further discussion? You thought there was gonna be more to that motion, didn't you? All right, if not, your vote please. And that is approved seven zero. Ordnance number, resolution number fifty-nine sixty-five has been approved. Next item on the agenda is public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone from the council have anything for the public forum? From the public? All right. Yeah, sure, Dwight.
Is anything going on in this building Wednesday night? Did you know it?
This coming Wednesday night?
Yeah.
The candidate forums.
Oh, I have never heard it advertised hardly at all. That may be a good time to announce it. It would be for discussion time.
Okay.
He knows about it. I only heard rumors of it.
My understanding is candidate forums are happening in this room for those of you who are up for reelection and have an opponent. I think city council starts at seven.
Seven.
And so they'll go, and then county board and school board and whoever else, I don't know if they're all, Wednesday night, it's also Wednesday, Thursday, but Wednesday night, they'll be on TV, and then they'll also be rerun on channel one eighty-one as well.
Thank you.
And our YouTube channels, if anybody wishes to watch it that way.
Thanks, Dwight. All right, we have discussion and reports. First item is strategic plan update.
We provided in your packets an update on the strategic plan. We talked about when it was passed. We wouldn't have an opportunity to review this every once in a while. Not gonna go through it all. I understand you have the packet, you have a chance to read it, but a few of the highlights are on the environmental portion of it. Talks about developing cleanups. Obviously, we have retained ownership of the elevator. Part of that building has been removed. We have ordered asbestos inspection, and so we are continuing on that path. Also, we've hired TerraCon to do some review of some environmental studies that were done previously on the ground down there by the river, to see what needs to be done to clean up that property, if anything. And so we are moving forward there. The, the phase one DTR grant, downtown revitalization grant, we're wrapping that up. It should come before you at the next council meeting for approval. Once that's completed, we'll then turn around and look for the phase two grant application, which is still to be determined by DED. They haven't set a date on that one yet, so as that moves forward. A couple others here, the highway corridor advisory committee has been established. It's a committee that's working on finding a way to improve the aesthetics, ultimately the entire town, but starting with the highway corridor. Look at the north corridor to start with, from Hickory Road down to about Hoyt Street and that general vicinity. And so you're looking to see a program starting to be developed, and as that program gets more established, more developed, I think you'll see them come forward with some ideas and some suggestions on what they can do to help revitalize and beautify that area. And then some other highlights that are in there, infrastructure. Regarding the fiber optic, we're continuing to work with different vendors, see if we can find an answer to how to bring fiber optics throughout the community. So we are still continuing to work with those, those vendors. Housing, as you know, we've had a housing study, we've quite a bit of housing going on. We'll have another presentation here a little bit about possible housing development, and so that one is moving forward. One of them that we did find in our strategic plan that may not work for us is the Nebraska Municipal Land Bank Act. That land bank act currently exists for, the way it's written, it works for Omaha. It's no special legislation, but it only works for Omaha. No other communities can have it. When we started looking at it, Greg and I started delving into it, we found that there's a fatal, a fatal flaw in the way it's written, at least the way we think it's written, that we wouldn't want to have part of it. When we started contacting Omaha and see how they ran into it, they never thought that that flaw existed, and we're a little surprised when we pointed it out to them. And so we're trying to find a way to modify that before we look to enact it here. It has to do with essentially properties that are sold on tax sales certificates. If there's not a bidder in it, it automatically gets sold to the city.
To the land bank.
To the land bank. So you can think of some properties that we would have in town that somebody might throw for tax sales certificate sales, that wouldn't then ultimately bid on them, and some of those properties you may not ultimately want to end up owning for various reasons. And so there are some things in there, we're trying to figure out how to, if we can revise that before we would look to adopt it. So, other than that, happy to answer any questions about strategic plan, but you know, various parts moving forward, Engage has got, been very busy with their economic development portion. I think every guy's aware of those activities that are going on. The Chamber and Main Street have been busy. Main Street got their national designation downtown, that's a huge portion of theirs, and so everybody's plugging away at their different parts.
Just a plug for you guys. Now that Standing Bear Trail started right there at the Trailhead at Dempsters, how nice that looks now that the old building's out and the tree that we thought maybe we should try to keep, but once it's been all cleared out, it looks very good. Be nice in a few years when we get done with the grain elevator and it's gone. Drive by it every day, you don't really start noticing until it was improved, and you guys did a good job on it.
Well, thank you. You'll start seeing some dirt work being.
They're doing it today.
This week, so.
They're doing it right now as I drove by, so.
As I talked to Eric earlier today, he was gonna start doing some dirt work down there and get some of that moved, and so hopefully they'll start seeing some grass grow. On the trail portion there, if you drive by it, you'll see that the parking lot, there's kind of an open circular area there. I know Mark is working with a landscape architect to go in and do some different trees and things like that in that area. Initially, it's gonna be grass, and we looked at it and thought that'd be too difficult to try to maintain, so we're gonna look to do some type of trees and shrubs and flowers and that kind of stuff in that area.
Those parking lots, are they going to be public parking lots like the rest of our parking lots owned by the city?
Probably so. I mean, ultimately, they'll be there for the trail and used for the trail. We may designate them for trail use only, just to keep them from being occupied by others who may not want to use the trail and keep them open.
Yeah, the bridge looks good. I was out there this morning. I'm on the lands.
Well, the trail's not open yet, so I know you were out investigating, right, as a council member.
Yeah, doing a survey.
But yes, for those of you who aren't aware, the Trails Foundation donated the additional funds for us to make the first bridge out of town, a covered bridge. And so we hired, the same contractor who did the covered bridges farther down on the trail also did that bridge, and so it's a nice little additional feature that the Trails Foundation was able to help us out with and provide funding for.
Any questions of Tobias? Good report, thank you very much. Item B, high deductible health plan and wellness plan.
So now one of those items that we talk about every year was, is health insurance. What can we do to help keep our costs down? So one of the things we are looking to introduce this year is a high deductible plan to our employees. As you'll note on page eighty-eight in your packet, it's a voluntary plan. Nobody's required to take it. You have to remember, we have three union contracts, we have to negotiate a lot of these things, and so we can't just come out and force employees to make changes one way or the other. But we're gonna make this an optional feature that they can choose if they so desire. You'll notice that we have in there what the deductibles will be, is fifteen hundred for a single, three thousand for a family. And then in addition to that, kind of the carrot to kind of get everybody to look at this option is having a health savings account, where the city would contribute five hundred dollars for a single or a thousand dollars for a family person into that account. Those funds then can be used to pay for various medical expenses. If you're familiar with a flex account or something like that, it's the same type of expenses. Biggest difference is with the health savings account, once the money's put in the account, it's yours. You don't lose at the end of the year like you do a flex account or something else. And so that would be the incentive then, you know, if you know that your medical bills on average are, are low, there's a way you could use the health savings account, funds. When you leave employment, the money is yours. You could use that then to pay your Medicare supplement, or buy health insurance until Medicare starts, or any number of other options that you'd wanna look for. And then you'll note down there, we have some educational meetings already established with the unions and the employees. We have some individuals from Lockton here coming out, and they'll put on those presentations for us and help educate everybody as to how this plan works. When we run the numbers, essentially for every person who moves over, the city will save money. We'll save the tune of about twelve hundred to fourteen hundred dollars for every employee that moves over to this plan. So there's also an incentive for us to get employees to move. And then you look at the wellness part on page eighty-nine. There's been a talk about having a wellness plan. City employees have been asking for it for years, trying to find a way to put something together. Again, we've come up with the voluntary plans available to them. We're gonna start with something simple, we're just have four fitness challenges. Put them out there, one every quarter. You sign up, it's gonna be on the honor system. If you complete that, we, we have a little prize that you win. If you complete all four of them, you win a little grand prize, you know, nothing that anybody's gonna wanna write home about, but give you a little, some incentive to go out and do those. Just something to kind of do, challenge in the office. Yes, Phil?
Gee, can the mayor and the city council join in on this wellness program? It might not do us harm, you know?
And we, we did open.
Yourself.
We did open the spouses as well, because, I mean, if you're on our health insurance and we're paying for you, we want everybody to be healthy, it helps keep our costs lower. And then you'll notice in the screenings, every year the city has offered an annual blood profile. We've offered that free of charge. This year, we're gonna change that just a little bit. Instead of doing a annual blood profile, we're gonna do a biometric screening. Very similar, but it's gonna add a few additional features in there. You'll see it, blood pressure, body mass index, cholesterol, it's gonna do all those types of things. So very similar to what you have before, it's just a little bit more. But again, it provides the city with more information about our employees. We're not gonna know that Greg's test came back this way or that way. What we're gonna know is in the aggregate, we have ten percent of our employees that have high blood sugar, or fourteen percent of our employees have diabetes. And so those are the numbers that we can start to work with, and then tune your wellness plan to start to address those issues and make everybody hopefully healthier. And then the last thing you'll see is we'll also have a health risk assessment. It's an online questionnaire that we're asking employees to fill out. Shouldn't take them more than about fifteen, twenty minutes. Again, just some more medical history about them. Once again, our vendor will have the information about individual employees. We will not receive that information, we'll receive it in the aggregate. And then again, as an incentive to get people to do that, we're offering a kind of a drawing for two hours of additional personal leave as a way to get people to do those two screenings.
I think it's an excellent start of a program that not only will it save us money, but our employees are going to become healthier, and I think that's, I think that's extremely important. Okay. Thank you, Tobias. Any questions of Tobias from the public? Okay. Next item is a presentation by Excel Development. Gentlemen, if you wanna come on up. We've met with these folks a couple of times, and now it's time to bring them forward to the city council and, and state their case. Joel, how are you?
I'm good.
Absolutely.
I'll get it for you, Joel.
Get better, huh?
I am.
Good.
Last time I was, was I in a crutch or a walker? Last time I.
You were a crutch.
Good. Down, down to the cane, and a few more months of physical therapy and.
Be good as new.
You betcha. Had some knee surgery.
Gentlemen, anytime you wanna start, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Tobias, city council members, thank you for having us here tonight. What we'd like to do is share with you a bit of a presentation here, and it's based off the RFP that was originally sent out for about four different topics, and what we chose to work on as the highest priority that we, we could see in going through your, your housing study that you had done, which was a great housing study, that's good for communities in the county to do that, is workforce housing. What we're looking at is in the Sunridge development, in the second addition out there, all between twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth and about Jefferson, out there on that first page. What we're proposing is a sixteen-unit, single-family workforce housing development project. So this would be homes in the neighborhood of a hundred and ninety-five to two hundred thousand range approximately, and we'll get into the numbers in a little bit, out there. And what we're coming forward with is a kind of a pro forma we put together, and those numbers, 'cause I, I always know you always like to see numbers, start on about the sixth to the last page in here. What we've got on the first page is, you know, the site plan, and for several pages, there's different floor plans and designs in there to take a look at, but to get to the meat of it, you go to the first one that has, you know, something like the green shading in the back of it on there. And I say, this is workforce housing. Workforce housing is probably the number one issue in almost every community in Nebraska today. When you go to a community and say, what's your biggest issue for economic growth? It's workforce housing is, you just hear that, it's in the top two in every, and usually it's number one. What we're finding out is, for a long time, it's been what comes first, the chicken or the egg, you know, is it, do you increase business, you know, and then build housing to go along with the new jobs that you've created? Or do you build the housing to bring the business in? A lot of, you know, a lot of places have really worked on the premise of, we need to bring the business in, and then we need the housing. The communities in Nebraska are now to the point where employers are not being able to hire staff to come in if they're expanding their business or wanting to bring in new business, you know, into Beatrice or into any other community out there, and it's what we call workforce housing. So it's, it's not like a tax credit, you've got some tax credit housing, which is, you know, limited to sixty percent of the area median income and things like that for real low-income housing out there. This is more for a person that, a family that could make, you know, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year and afford to have a house payment. What we're doing is gonna ask for some, you know, some different funds to help discount the pricing on the first phase here. And what we've seen in other communities we've worked in is, once you get the ball rolling with the first project, other projects will then follow down the road. But if I go through the numbers here with you just real quick, you know, the land acquisition I've got in there, it's, it's for sixteen lots, it's three hundred thousand dollars, which is eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty a lot. And I'll just be real honest enough with you, that's not a price that has been agreed upon with the land, current landowners.[1775.87] They are asking for more than that, but that's something we're working on to try and get them down to this price. We think it's a fair price for the lots and, you know, to make this work. The construction of the 16 is about $3 million. I've got a contingency of $40,000 in there. The rest of it is just some breakdown of, you know, some site planning, survey, architect, engineering, some real estate attorney fees to get all this done. So you've got those soft costs of $71,000, then just some appraisal, you know, some property taxes, title, insurance, that type of stuff, some marketing and admin. And then I just put in there right up front, our fee to do this project is $182,000, which is just over 5%, which normal out there is probably 8% to 10%. But so what we're looking at is about a 5.2% fee. And I figure it's important just to put that in upfront, so there's nothing hidden. The different types of homes that we're looking at at the bottom of the screen there, what we're looking at is with a model called the Bradford and the Donald and the Garrett. And you have four plans in here for each and every one of them and elevation shots, so you can see what they look like. They range anywhere from 1,365 square feet to 1,440 to 1,523 square feet. And they're three-bedroom, two-bath, two-stall garage, when you get in to look at it. Got some, you know, estimated sales prices. And obviously, this is just a preliminary performa, but this is what we're kind of shooting at, is sales prices between $193 and $205,000 for the homes. And we feel that, based on current wages out there, that this is the price range we need to be in for workforce housing. Stop me at any point in time to ask questions, okay? On the second page, you know, what I have in there is the profit and loss. And again, what I have in there is the sales price of the homes, total price, you know, total revenue that would come out of those. I've got a 4% realtor fee in there to deduct, you know, off of the sales price. And normally what we will do, we have a person on staff, you know, who is a licensed realtor that usually you'll see real estate fees about 6%. We can set it at 4 and work with a local realtor and give them 3. You know, we just want one to cover our cost, you know, of our person on staff. That's why it's 4 and not 6 or 7%. And sometimes you can get a local realtor to agree to 2, 2.5%, which would lower that by a half to 1% on there. But we just, you know, we just usually take 1 and give the rest to the local realtor. Because you want a local realtor out there selling these homes. We're, excuse me, Excel Development, we're from Lincoln, Nebraska. So as far as where we're at and located, I lived in Beatrice for about six and a half years, the end of the 90s, early 2000, and gained a son-in-law from our time down here. And he's a great kid, because his dad's in the room, I got to say that, so. And he carries a gun back there. Back there. But so, yeah, Chief Lang and I know each other quite well. Funds we were looking for towards the program, it's $360,000 of tax increment financing, which would go towards the land purchase and fees, various fees to go within there. And then we're also looking at using some LB-840 money, $250,000 of LB-840, for a total subsidy of $610,000. If you, you know, if you go down through the numbers, it's just got, you know, total project cost there is 3.65, 6 million on there. If you take the total sales revenue under total costs, what it shows you about $605,000 short. We're asking for 600, or 606 short. We're asking for 610. Our total subsidy per unit of $37,871. Leaves a net profit of $4,000. Now, some communities we've worked this in, what they've done is they've increased those TIF and LB-840 money up by maybe about $100,000 so that they have $100,000 left when the homes are all sold to put towards the next phase of a project. You know, that's something you can do. I didn't show that, but it's, we've done it both ways and, you know, it's kind of up to each individual city is what they're thinking is. I didn't show it in there on this one. I showed it to the mayor and to Tobias that way when we first talked, but I thought, well, for now, I'll leave it out and try, you know, and upsell you. Up there. The next pages are simply just, the next four pages, there's no easy way to do it, but that's a cash flow statement of just over 23 months of how it works. With 16 homes, basically starting, you know, like six homes the first month, five homes the second month, five homes the third month. So construction's starting over three months, and they'll finish out over about four to five months, from the end of the first home to the end of the last home being constructed out there. And then it just goes through the expenses on there. What it shows, I think the most, the highest cash outlay is, you know, 1.9, about 1.9 million. Yeah, 1.923 million out there during the course of, course of the project. Now, the funds coming in, I show the TIF funds coming in at the end of the project, which is what you would want. There's no sense having the TIF money come in at the front, and then you've got to start paying on the TIF loan. You know, the bond comes due before the houses are ever sold. And so you haven't generated any, you know, any property taxes off any of these values yet. So normally, the TIF is at the end of the, comes in at the end of the project. The LB-840 money, what we usually do is set that up as certain goals that need to be achieved by us in order for that money to come in. You know, purchasing of the land, you know, 50% construction completion, drywall being up. And again, those are all things that you, you know, your LB-840 committee can set up, you know, to do that. I guess they were looking at 16 homes. And, you know, that's just a quick rundown of kind of the dollars and cents. And I would more than glad to kind of talk to you a little bit more of your questions about the actual project itself. I guess this was a basic response to an RFP that was put out there. I don't believe there were any other responses out there where there.
I don't think so.
You know, to that. But we're real interested in Beatrice, you know, of course, having lived here. I've looked at Beatrice for a long time and, you know, and we enjoy the community. And we work throughout the entire state of Nebraska. We've done projects from, you know, from Fall City to, you know, Auburn to South Sioux to Alliance, Nebraska, McCook, and everywhere in between out there. We've been around for 27 years as a company.
Rich?
And I apologize, I'm not familiar with your company, but is this a stick-built house, or do you manufacture them off-site and roll them in like we did at Merryweather?
We don't manufacture off-site, you know, but what we will do is take, we'll look at both ways. We'll look at stick-built and we'll look at, you know, bringing in the walls and stuff like that. Not a manufactured home that you bring in and put on a site, no. These will, these will be $200,000, nice, custom homes, basically, out there. The last one we did up in Broken Bow, we did 10 homes, 12 homes up in Broken Bow, workforce housing. And we were fortunate enough to have a local person up there who actually guaranteed the loan. The local hospital guaranteed half of the homes. They said if they don't sell within a year, we'll take them. All 12 sold before we ever turned to shovel the dirt out there. There was such a housing demand that was just pinned up in there. What we normally do too, I mean, we're out of Lincoln, and we work all over the state. Actually, we work in about four states. We work in Kansas, Oklahoma, and Iowa also. But when it comes down to bidding a project out, we try, and first thing we do before we go out to bid is we have a local subcontractors meeting in the city we're going to work in. We want to make them aware of it so they know and kind of show them the project. This is where we're going to go out to bid. We want to use as many local subs, you know, and lumber yards, stuff like that, as we can. Obviously, we've got a price, we've got a hit, and, you know, we're going to commit my, building these homes for a certain price. We go out to bid, and sometimes the locals will bid, sometimes they won't. Depends on how busy they are, depending on the time of year. On this project, we're looking, we'd love to go out to bid at a time when, before next year is already booked up by all the local subs. Once we get the bids back, we look at them. If the local subs are high, and a lot of times these days they are, because they're just hard to find subs and they're all busy, and they're going, well, if I'm going to take on this project, I'm already busy and booked up, and so I'm going to throw an extra 15% on it. And so if I get it, I'll bump somebody. If I don't, no big deal. We'll come back, and before we actually accept, you know, the low bid, if it's, you know, somebody out of Lincoln or Omaha or Kansas City or whatever, we'll come back to the local sub and say, hey, you know, can you sharpen your pencil? We really want to use local. I mean, when you're doing mechanical, electrical, plumbing, it's nice to have a local vendor to call on and not somebody out of Omaha or Kansas City, you know, when you have a problem. Now, it doesn't always work out that way, because sometimes the locals just say, sorry, that's just what my bid is. And, you know, they're 15% higher than somebody else, and, you know, we just can't build them using them then. So there's no guarantee, but let's say, we've learned. Really try and work hard with the subs. And if we have that pre-meeting, it really helps get a larger response from them. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Like I said, at some point, what would we be coming back for is asking for, or the city to come back. I'm not sure how your process would work, you know, to get approval of some TIF and, you know, and some LB-840 money.
The TIF, obviously, we have a Blight and Substandard Study that's currently under review. When Hannah Kealan gets that done, that'll come back to this body. I think that's probably two to three weeks out before we receive that back from them. And then that would allow us to move forward with some TIF financing at that point, so.
Where are we sitting on our percentage with TIF?
We will still be fine.
If we add this to it?
Yep.
We're still under the percentage?
Yes, we are. LB-840 funding, after our current commitments, we have $165,000 available, but you have to remember you have the house at 1923 Ella, once that sells, and the contributions made for next fiscal year, which start in about 10 days, you'll be back up to $565,000.
Any other questions? All right, gentlemen, thank you very much for your presentation. Thanks for the interest in the community, too.
Thank you for taking the time.
Absolutely. Safe trip back. All right. Last item on the agenda is the city administrator's monthly report.
Once again, I just want to hit a few highlights. One of them I want to note is that on 407 Court Street, Mr. Birch will be able to provide some details, but the masonry contractor is supposed to begin work in mid-September. I don't know if they've been down yet, but I do know that we have made our payment out as part of their down payment. So we have begun that process of removing the stucco and masonry repairs. With that process, at least our payment has started.
We made our payment, but they haven't started work?
They required a down payment.
They required a down payment for half of the estimate. There, it was up front on the, on the estimate they provided, so that was pursuant to the agreement signed in the demolition contract.
If you haven't been, go down Scott Street Ballfields. The capital improvements down there have been completed for the year, so Mark and his guys did a wonderful job. And so stop down and see those.
Looks nice.
The other thing I want to note is our sanitary sewer lining project is currently ongoing. Maybe those that run around different parts of town, but they should be done in the next two weeks and out of here, and we'll go on to the next project.
Questions, anybody? All right, Tobias, thank you very much. Our next regular city council meeting is going to be on Monday, October 3rd, in these chambers. Our work session will be next Monday, September the 26th, at 7:00 in this building. And now I would ask that we go into executive session.
Mayor, I move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 8:03 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations.
By Catlin, seconded by.
Yeah.
Kerr. That the city council goes into executive session at 8:03 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss negotiations. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0.